Okay, four o'clock. Sorry. I, you know, it's four o'clock. This is a special meeting for the Budget Audit Committee August 14th, and I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, I think we got it visually. We are, both members of the committee are here. And so first up, public comment on non-agenda items. Does anyone have public comment on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none.
And I can also confirm there are no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, seeing none, we'll close that. And then the only action item we have today is item 3A. This is the quarterly financial report on the city's investment portfolio for the June 30, 2023 period. I believe, Prop, you are taking us away. All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Wong and Councilmember Trupiano. In front of you today is the investment report for the quarter ending June 30, 2023. The city continues slowly to improve the investment position on the total investment. The total interest for fiscal year 2223 was about $238,000. Total interest received for UBS for second quarter of 2023 was $71,000. At this time, we're receiving over 5% interest from our PFM camp account, which is a liquidity pool similar to the LEAF account, which is also used by the city, but in short term, the camps rate are better. LEAF's apportionment rate is around 3%. The total portfolio for the liquid money market is 12.12% for us. So all new money that matures are moved to the higher yielding investments. So that has been our priority. Anything that matures, we're reinvesting it to the higher yielding investments. Recently, outside of this report, we did invest in two CDs that are yielding 5.45% and 5.25% with a two-year and a three-year time period respectively. So you could see that in June's report, that July's report that I sent you. Yeah, okay. Recent, okay. And then you can also see some suggestions that our UBS representative has, have outlined in the report. Right now, the interest rate is high, but you know, the staff does not believe in selling the low-yielding investment and buying the new one because the loss outweighs the interest revenue we're going to receive. So it's best that we wait for these investments to mature and then we can reinvest in higher yielding investments. The interest rate also continues to remain from around 5 to 5.50%. So you know, we, we, we believe that this, that we let these investments mature and then reinvest in higher yields. One thing we have to remember is that even though the interest rates like it's high, this is not a structural revenue change. It's a short-term gain that, you know, is because of the market we are experiencing. So it could revert back to the normal rate of 2% to 3%, matching the Federal Reserve inflation rate. So that was, that was my conclusion on the report. Me, City Manager, and I are here if you have any questions. Do you have any question?
No, no, no.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And thanks for, what's that?
Yeah, we have some questions.
Yeah. Did you want to go or you want to go? Okay, cool. Okay, so I have questions, but not in order. Not in order of relevance or importance, but they're just random questions that I have. So when I look at camp versus LEAF, you mentioned camp is yielding a higher rate than LEAF is slight, is lower by about two, two full points. Why do we still have money in LEAF at all?
So historically, in my experience, we, we, it's nice to not dissolve that relationship. LEAF can be rather difficult if you take it to zero to start to kind of recreate that just operational process with them. And so we leave a little bit money in there. It's still yielding, you know, not as good as camp, but a decent amount. What we continue to try to do, and as Prop has barely been on a month, not even a month now, is we're trying to understand our overall liquidity needs a little bit better, especially as we look to move to capital project work that Larry might be doing coming up here in the fall. And so we, you will see that shift around in the Bank of America account, the LEAF account, the camper account over time. And so it's us just really feeling comfortable with moving money and having a little bit sense of liquidity before we start just kind of moving all the ships on the deck.
Okay, so what is the minimum holding to keep a LEAF account open?
Let me double check and look. It's been a while since I've dug in that deep to get that answer, but we'll get it from LEAF. We can get that answer from LEAF.
Okay. Because I, I mean, this is in June. Has the asset allocation between LEAF and camp changed much since then?
I don't think so. It's around 3%. When I last checked last week, it was around 3%. So no.
And LEAF has traditionally or historically been a little bit lower than camp in terms of yields, but I know that that's not set in stone. It could fluctuate. But given the properties of both camp and LEAF, and that they're both highly liquid pools, if, unless there's some other consideration that I am not seeing, then I would suggest that we always have a bias towards moving funds to the higher yield. A difference, the delta is a little north of 2% and that the dollars we're talking about, that's about $20,000 a year. It's basically free money. We should get it. So I want the money. Can, can we do that? I like the money.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And you know, I would think that, to the extent, you know, maybe there's an inherent burden, if the delta is like 10 basis points or something, it's probably not worth it to mess around. But at these, this variance is pretty big. It's like 60%. Oh, no, sorry, my bad. Two, three. Yeah, 60%, give or take, difference in yield between them. So I would, I would definitely think that actively managing the camp LEAF balance is worthwhile. Okay. So then, let's see. Then you spoke earlier about cash flow needs. And I may, my recollection is a little bit thin on this one. On a regular basis, what's our, this talks about, we talk about our outflows, and I think we can look at our obligations and all that. We can get a sense of the, the outflows. But what about the periodic inflows? I know it's not, it's not even, right? Doesn't it come in spikes over the year?
It, it does. Like, it all depends on when we get the revenue, but I would have to look at the GL more closely. And I, I will email you the information.
Yeah, I think generically, I can tell you that because this city is so property tax-heavy.
It's primarily property tax.
If you look at December and April, where the majority of your, of your, we'll call it inflows. And then when regards to our actual operating bank, we have bank analysis charges that we all love that, you know, Bank of America is slightly higher than what I'm used to. Could also be the lack of dollars I'm used to having in these banks too that also trigger that. So you know, we have to keep a pretty high minimum right now to get there. And so as we've talked about in email, not as high as what's in your June report, as we've adjusted that already. But, but we do need to keep it because at some point, gaining the extra yield to pull the money out and the offset in the analysis charges, it, it, it is not an exercise we want to play month to month. But we are definitely trying to ongoing lure the liquidity needs in the Bank of America account as much as we can to move it at least, if nothing else, to one of the liquidity pools that is just not at a rate that will be offset by the bank analysis charges.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I understand how that works conceptually. It just at two, sorry, I can't read it. At 2.9 million at the June date in just a straight-up checking account seems really high, especially given that we, I mean, I think the liquidity over camp is a one-day turnaround, if I recall from our annual report.
Yeah.
But that has changed already, right? The 2.9?
Yeah, we, we've already gone down to 1.6 million, and we continue to evaluate it. You know, again, you know, this is my third month, and property is not even a month. So I think when the team is fully together on a consistent basis, this becomes an easier thing to manage and maneuver. I think the trend, this is where transitions create inefficiencies, right? As you're seeing it, and, and stuff kind of stays stagnant and isn't actively monitored. And so, yeah, we continue to, you know, without obviously being, you know, money managers, because that's not our core function, but as, as much as we can do it and still maintain the other aspects of what staff's work is, we continue to try to lower the liquidity in the non-yielding areas as best we can and move them to the higher yielding areas.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a general concept, I think that's great. I just think that it was very, it was jarring to me to see such a high number, especially given our, the ability that we have to move into the investment pools at a liquid basis. So I get transition, not everything happens exactly, right? So I would just make sure that we're aware of what that is. It is something that like I would like to understand in terms of analysis charge. It, I don't know if we've ever shopped it because the CBA, I, I'm sorry, the cost benefit for retaining, you know, a million dollars, using a round number, a million dollars in the checking account, you know, sacrificing $55,000? Like, if our analysis charge is that high, that'd be crazy. So it may be worth like evaluating that like on a more, rather than just like, I understand there's an analysis charge. It costs something. But understanding in more detail, like, does it really cost us that much? And if it does, can we talk with Bank of America and get either, have that conversation with them or shop it? Because that seems really high to me.
Yeah, so doing a bank RFP, I've done two of them in my career. That's rather extensive, and I can tell you that probably isn't in a recent work plan that's going to happen anytime soon from staff. But, but we definitely can look at, like I said, now the team's here consistently. We can definitely look at, you know, the delta or value add versus what is probably our more normalized cash flow need versus the interest that we could yield in moving it. Now that we have staff that's here, that we can have those conversations. Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to understand it more because we get questions about, well, I do. I don't know if you do. I get questions about this regularly, like, how much money does the city have? What are they doing with the money? And is it the highest best use? And when I look at like a report like this, I, I have to say, I don't know if it is. I think it may be, but I can't really say for certain that it is. And so I want to be able to say, we've done the analysis. It's very clear that this is the right choice. But I don't, but we can't do that right now.
Yeah, well, and, and I will also say that, you know, remember, it's not all the general fund, right? So some of these assessments and everything else, this stuff gets apportioned out too. So, you know, for the viewing public that might look at this, you know, that's also something to be mindful of, is that all of the assessment districts and everything else that have reserves will essentially.
But those don't have any money.
Well, but they, but some of them have reserves. We don't have a lot, we only have $5 million, $6 million general fund reserves, so the other five's got to be sitting somewhere. And so, you know, just so everyone understands how that part works, we don't get to choose where the interest goes. It flows with the balance.
It flows with the balance, which is great.
Right, right.
And even if it flows into a special assessment district or somewhere where it is essentially encumbered or it's locked into that, we should still be maximizing whatever that is.
May I just ask a quick question around that too? So we were in June at 2.9 million, more or less, in the checking. We're down to 1.6, and so the balance of that went where? Where did that go?
Combination of obligations, camp, you know, a variety of the two. You know, remember July through, well, even the end of the last fiscal year, so call it May through, it could be December for our agency that's so property tax-driven, is a pretty dry period for us. You get a little bit of sales tax here. It's less than, you know, probably 40 grand a month on average that comes in, maybe 50 in some high months. And so that dry period is going to wind down a lot of cash. And so part of that's what happening, and then some small movement to the various liquidity pools, but mostly obligations. Yeah.
And we also had a debt payment to US Bank for almost about $800,000 last month. We did.
And what was that for, Prop?
Oh my God, I don't remember now.
I'd have to check with staff. I think it was either, it was either the last, I want to say it was either the last middle school payment related to that debt obligation and/or it was, or, or, not and, or it was the redevelopment payment. I don't know which one it was.
I think it was the middle school.
I think, I think, I mean, that's what came top of mind when you asked the question, Councilmember, but, but yeah.
There's a general obligation bond for the middle school. I think it's paying off. I think there's four significant debt obligations outstanding over the next several years, so. Okay. Then, let's see. So as a general ask, I know that you had included, you sent us both an email this weekend regarding the statements. If we could have, because what I, what I really like to see is not only the balances and positions, well, actually, the balances, but also the activity. The activity over the period, to me, is, is, is really something that I'm interested in. So if we could have the list of activity, it doesn't have to be detailed. It could be summary activity, like total, total interest, but then like some of the purchases. But then, the other thing that I, that we had, I think it was prior to you getting here, it was in the March timeframe, we both got a spreadsheet of all open positions. It's a lot easier to read. Like, I think that it's probably just a download from their system that we can get, rather than like this report, which has a lot of what I would consider superfluous or less relevant information. There was like an Excel file that they prepared or we prepared. I'm not sure.
From UBS?
Yeah. And it was, it was very easy to read because you could see all the maturities. You could see all the rates. You could see all the investments. It was, it was good. It was like, I, I mean, I could, I could send you that same file if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be good.
So you could see it. It's perfect. Because it just, it's a lot easier to, to understand where we're at on that one. So I will send you that. And then when we're talking about the actual activity, it looks like the majority of our recent acquisitions were in two-year-ish CDs. Is that fair statement? Some of them weren't, but I was looking, I had to open up each statement month to month.
So to, I mean, since I've been here, it's been two-year and it's a couple three-year CDs.
Yeah. So I guess, can you kind of elaborate on why we're doing CDs and not treasuries? And I say this because when, if you look at our previous portfolio as of, I don't know, circa December 2022, so not that long ago, it was primarily in CDs. I think, yeah, a very large majority was CDs. And one of the challenges of these CDs is they're not very liquid. And so I guess I'm wondering why, what's our strategy on staying in CDs?
So it, it depends. And so what we, you know, without corporate debt in the policy, we, yield becomes something we have to focus on with those two instruments. And because of that, we just look at a lot of times, at least in the few that we've had so far, what's a better yield? Understanding our cash flow because we have camp and LEAF, right? So we have liquidity there that's going to help us day-to-day with the inflows. And so if the yield is better in the product we talked with UBS about on a CD versus a treasury at the time, we'll move in that direction. It doesn't mean that as we kind of look at future, that it's, it would always be that way. We would take it literally on a case-by-case basis. When you say that they're not liquid, if we have to start selling assets at any point, treasury or otherwise, to meet cash flow needs, that's a problem.
Yeah, that's a big problem.
So, so you never want to manage a public, you know, a public treasury pool in that way with that mentality. And so for us, if we can maximize yield and we're comfortable with the duration of the instrument, then we'll try to maximize yield in those instruments, knowing that selling should not really be an option because we try to manage cash flow so that never happens.
Yeah, I think our policy is that, you know, we hold items to maturity generally. I think that's the policy. But one of the, one of the core principles of the policy is liquidity. So how do we reconcile those two things then? I mean, I get holding to maturity as a strategy.
So public treasury, safety, liquidity, yield is a standard, right?
Yes.
Practice. So safety is first, right? And.
Treasuries, like ticks off, ticks that one.
Yeah, ticks that one. So do CDs. Liquidity, it's a broad sense, right? So if that was the case, then we would never buy a CD because they're not liquid at all. So the idea is that you have enough liquidity broadly within the pool to be able to deal with your obligations. As long as we can meet that, then yield becomes the third level, right? And so if we check off the two boxes and then we focus on yield. So, you know, like I said, it's a, it's a sliding scale. It's, it's, it's a case-by-case evaluation of the timing of when maturities happen. We look at our obligations over time, and then we make that assessment and decision on whether we need to be in something that, like a CD, that has a certain yield, a certain duration, or, you know, do we need to be in something that is shorter duration? And at that pace, right now, we probably would just throw it in camp if that was the case. Or if we want to be in something like a treasury. I would never make an investment decision that I'm going to have to sell this investment before maturity in a public treasury. That would never go through our minds on how we're making a decision.
Well, and those CDs that you're referring to, what was the yield on those?
On the more recent purchases, I think they were, you know, whatever the market rate was at the time. I think the earlier ones were like 4.7, 4.8, and then the more recent ones were higher.
And then Brett, who makes that decision? Sorry. Do you and Prop make that decision together? Do you do that with the recommendation of UBS in any way, shape, or form?
I mean, well, UBS will provide us what options are out there at the time and we're looking to invest cash with them. We'll talk through with them what our kind of ideas are. You know, we'll discuss cash flow as that kind of, you know, need is there. And then, you know, they'll offer some recommendations of, of, you know, options we could make with understanding that very specific point in time conversation we're having on what we're looking to invest in.
And I know our UBS rep, James Still, is going to be here tomorrow night for our council meeting. But are there some products also, just staying on that for a minute, that for UBS are commissionable versus non-commissionable?
My experience when you're buying treasuries and CDs and whether they're farm credits or any of that, it's, I mean, they're all making a somewhat standard amount of money. We are not probably big enough, you know, when I was managing $700 million for the County of Napa, I shopped products because I had so much money to do, right? So I could ask, you know, three brokers to give me a bids on a $50 million buy, right? And of course, they're going to be advantageous for them to look into that. Here with these very tiny purchases, I mean, we're almost like a retail investor, to be quite honest. And so there's less of that reality. They're making a little bit of money that they make on normal trades. I wouldn't, yeah, that isn't too concerning for me.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that being, kind of like, kind of continuing along that one. So it looks like a lot of our investments are in the 250 or less mark because I think that's the max CDs that are available, right? But if we were to go into treasuries, I mean, there's no limit to the size that we can get for those buys?
Correct. It's, it's what's available in the market. I mean, we could go as high as we need to. The question for us becomes, you know, and I obviously have not been here a long time with the portfolio, but in a portfolio this small, the question is, do you want to have a slightly different diverse ladder of time and, and yield, right? Or do you want to be more centralized, which isn't a risk in treasuries per se, but do you want it to be more centralized? For us, it's more about the timing. So as we look at cash flow and when we want things to kind of mature on the backend is a little bit of what we're trying to do. And again, for us, because, you know, I think this city has not done the capital work and other things that are coming up over time that's going to happen or may need to use some of those reserves for potential projects or things that council might want, we have to be a little careful not going too far out with things because I'm unclear what the future might hold with some of that money that is needed for, for projects and different things that council may desire. And so we, we kind of ladder it because of that and in different instruments and don't just buy, you know, don't just build it up and then buy a $3 million treasury two years out and hold it at that case. So we try to ladder it. So again, cash flow is kind of flowing off for us to make decisions. In a high-yielding investment or high-yielding interest market like this, we will take it out as far as we can to try to lock in the benefit. Now, I'll say, probably with the Fed and everything right now, interest rates aren't going to drop off an elevator, right, down low. And so we probably have a good amount of runway to continue to let mature. As Prop mentioned, let them mature and continue to roll up into, whether that's a treasury or a CD. Again, we'll make a, a timing and a yield kind of decision when that, when that money becomes available.
Well, and also too, maybe, you know, we're not the biggest fish in the pond, obviously, but we also, a little could make a big difference in our portfolio. And we, we know that we've been traditionally very conservative. And, right, we don't have any debt. We, so, and I guess one of my other questions too was sort of around, as things mature, is the strategy always a case-by-case basis? Because I know there's a lot maturing, a few more things later this year, a lot in 2024, '25, I think even more. So is the strategy based on whatever the market conditions are at the time and working with our UBS rep?
So strategy is, you know, when something matures, we look at cash flow over the next, for us, six months. And, you know, do we have enough sitting in camp? Do we have enough sitting in Bank of America? Do we know kind of what inflows would be primarily property tax here? If all those boxes are checked, then we can probably, in most cases, go out a little bit further. But yeah, it would be the market. So if something matures in 20, late '24, as an example, we'll see at the time, what's the best use, right? Do we have higher liquidity needs? Do we have a, a capital project that got flagged by council that's X hundreds of thousands that we need to now be mindful of relative to everything else? You know, are these other funds doing something in the assessments that they're going to spend more money than we think? After those kind of conversations are had, yeah, we look highest and best use, right? And frankly, whether it's a treasury or CD, I mean, yield is yield. It's, it's almost the same kind of instrument and sets the guarantee. One's backed by the FDIC and one's backed by the treasury, in essence, both backed by the government. And so because we're not into corporate debt, although I think that's probably not a high risk either, to be very frank, you know, I, I think there's kind of six or one half dozen on either one of those at this point.
Thank you.
It's just, it's just weird to me. Not weird, that's, that's the wrong way to describe it. If we kind of consider treasuries and CDs as similar instruments, it does seem like we have a bias towards CDs, just based on the, based on the makeup of the portfolio. I'm trying to understand why that is. And I can't, I'm not really sure.
I, I haven't been here for a long time, so I don't know to tell you. I don't have a bias towards CDs or treasuries. I will literally look with Prop when the moment comes up and then we'll make the investment. I can't tell you unfortunately what the past years, my guess is.
But you could look at the portfolio and see it.
No, no, I've seen, I've seen what we've done, why we've done it. I'm saying, I, I can't tell you what finance directors and city managers of the past. Typically, my experience is most people didn't grow up in the world of treasury, right, throughout their municipal government career. I, a little bit different and did. So I may be more apt to be able to look, whoops, look at it and maneuver. But for our time here, we haven't made a distinction on feeling more comfortable with one or the other. We'll do what's the highest and best use relative to the situation at the time that we have money maturing.
Okay. And then as far as durations, like, I know that you mentioned that we're going into two- and three-year products. Is there any consideration for more of either a shorter duration? Or like, I know that some of the coupons on, on a few of the products are a little bit on the low side, I would say, so in terms of cash flow. Is that something that we've thought about in terms of how we do our, our product selection?
Are you, I'm just clarifying the question. Are you asking?
It's two questions, I guess.
Why we have not, again, we haven't done a lot since I or Prop have been here. So I, I want to speak too much of the past because I don't know what their logic was. But why we are not investing in a shorter-term note versus a longer-term note? If the yields were, were somewhat similar and we didn't have any cash flow constraints, locking in a slightly longer yield in today's environment is probably better because the up is probably not capped, but there's probably a little bit less up is what we have been hearing, and probably more down over the next two or three years, right? Now, again, not an elevator, but it'll start, will probably start to normalize. And so with a short term note, if you don't need it for cash flow, you are taking a little bit of an interest rate risk, right? That when it matures, you may be in a different, not as advantageous interest rate environment. But again, we look at these things on a case by case basis as money matures.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're here in August and I think we kind of started down this weird interest rate environment adventure in November, maybe, give or take.
With the Fed you're talking about?
Yeah, maybe it's a little before that.
Probably maybe two years we've been raising rates.
It's been going up and up. You know, at the, you know, when it's at 2%, it goes to 2.2, like no one really, it's okay. But when it goes up to, you know, north of five, then everyone starts to pay attention. So like, the delta between the six month treasury and the two year note is like 50 basis points, which, I don't know, I'm trying to do math in my head here. Over our portfolio, that would be, that'd be quite significant.
So I think, remember, we are also not hedge fund managers, right? So this is a piece of what we do. And I think I can tell you, when I did it as the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, that was what I did for a county, right? That's not what happens in cities in general, especially a city of this size. And so the active way you're kind of evaluating some of this is probably not what's realistic for the city of Clayton with its staffing. I think when money matures, we look at a position, we look at cash flow. And, you know, we are talking about, you know, somewhat of a smaller basis point delta between X and Y that on the margins, although it's more money, some of it won't really matter. What we're truly trying to do is get from really bad stuff, which is stuff I think that is probably 1% and 2% still sitting on the books, and moving it to something that's five, which is a very significant change and can help us, as Propty said, not balance a budget because it's not structural over time, but will give us more money to do things in the moment, year to year, which is great. And I think we don't want to lose sight of that reality of how we function. When we talk about this, it's very, very important to keep that front of mind for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. So then, the only thing I was thinking about was, when I look at the statements and the average cash balance at the UBS, I think it ranges from like 200 to 400 or, you know, I mean, that's the average daily balance. But then in some months, the end balance will be higher or lower than that. And the yield on the cash positions at UBS is like basically zero. I think it's 10 basis points or less, give or take. So what, and from the way that you described it, it sounds like at maturity, we then evaluate next best action and then do that. So there could be a period of time where the where the proceeds from any one product is sitting in cash at UBS. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, and back to transition, I didn't even have the ability legally to do it up until a month ago because of all the timing and transition, just so to give you a sense of like, you know, again, the delay. I would say it's best to probably look, not even in this last report, because like I said, I barely got it with Propty. I would say as we get into quarter ending December is probably what a more realistic view of our functional process would be on a lot of this. I think it's maybe a better representation. As we continue to try to, as I said, reshuffle appropriately the deck of the chairs on the ship, so to speak, with everyone here now would be my recommendation for the council and you both in the subcommittee role. As a better sense of like what we're going to do versus what we've been done prior to Propty Brett, you know, being in the seats that we're in.
Okay, no, I think that that makes sense, I understand that. Okay, I think that was.
And some of my questions for Brett and Propty are, I'm the layman here, right? So if you can explain for me just a couple of things like, and I'm looking at your discussion points, which I thought were terrific. In the opening paragraph, it says the city received a total of $238,294 in investment earnings for the entire cash and investment pool for fiscal year 2023. And those exceeded budget by $119,684, which is terrific. And I just want to know, my question around that was, it says primarily due to the city investing, reinvesting proceeds in a shorter term, higher rate investment. And maybe this question is also for Mayor Juan. Was that the $500,000 that we talked about earlier in this year shifting to a higher yield? Do we know what that?
It sounds like it, but I'm not, I can't tell from the detail. Like, there was a period of time at the beginning of the year where we looked at and said, hey, like the cash balances is high. Let's move a small portion now so that then we can do the analysis on cash flow needs. And I think that amount was $500,000, but I can't tell from this.
So in general, again, I wasn't here when the budget was created in 2022, '23. To be 119 or what is probably double is my guess almost what the budget was. Again, transition, this is what happens when you don't have individuals that understand these markets and budgeting and your reserve balances and what they all mean. It was probably very under budgeted, right? Number one, relative to an interest rate environment that we were somewhat being able to see was going to go up. And then I think broadly speaking, all the money that rolled off, inclusive of the 500 grand that you guys are talking about and all the other money, to get to that amount of money difference was millions that had to kind of flip over and were kind of easily moved to very high yielding things relative to the, what could have been zero to less than 1%. And much of that money could have been stuck in if it was old enough.
Easily done by us?
Yeah, us meaning, us meaning whoever the finance and city manager were. The UBS probably said, here's four and a half percent and you were at one, like it doesn't take, you know, yeah, like, you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, that's probably what happened.
And that was part of our impetus for doing that too, right, earlier in the year is to get it. And then a little further in that paragraph, it says the city's portfolio continues to be invested in CDs, sort of tagging on to Mayor Juan's comment. And so now we have a little bit more of a diversification strategy. So it still includes some CDs as well as federal agencies and medium term notes and municipal bonds. Is that right? So we're, the CDs being, would you say probably the lowest yielding? No?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It really depends on the moment in time.
Okay.
It really does. You could have banks that are.
You could have banks that are pushing for liquidity, that are out there, you know, shopping a little bit higher yield that you can lock in. You could have treasuries that spike, for an instance. That's why we really have to evaluate it on a, in the moment, maturity versus cash flow. And that's why, whether it's a federal farm credit, whether it's a treasury, whether it's a CD, you know, again, we are trying to look, we're more focused on when it's coming off for cash flow needs. That's step one. Once we kind of check that box, then it's okay. Within that window, what's the highest and best use for us relative to those investment vehicles we can invest in?
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And then in the second paragraph, it is sort of the last sentence of that paragraph. It says, "Portion of LAIF fund has been invested in higher yield US Treasury notes." Do we, well, second to last sentence, do we know when we did that or is that an ongoing? Okay.
I'm not sure when. I can tell you, you know, like we kind of talked about the shuffling of the deck chairs, that'll be ongoing. So it'll be constant money in, constant money out. And we're going to be like, okay, you know, as Mayor Juan mentioned, like where's the best use? So if LAIF has too much, we'll move it to camp and so on and so forth, and yeah.
Okay, and we already talked about shorter term. Because that one, two, three, fourth paragraph, the current yield is 1.99. It's up 0.11 from three months ago and the average duration is 1.94 years. So we are, obviously, it's a continual assessment of our portfolio. The only other question I had, let's see, I think I had two here, bless you. Expected annual cash flow, 204, 120. Are you able to explain to me what that is?
Yes, that is the total interest we receive from UBS.
Okay. And that's, that was annual as of when?
Fiscal year 2022, '23.
Okay, so last year, okay, gotcha. And I think that was the question I had, the when, 2022, '23. And the very, this is the second paragraph from the bottom. That starts with, it should be noted that the gain. At the very end, it says, "As of June 2023, the market value of the portfolio exceeds the book value by 627, 756. And increasing interest rates decreases the value of the portfolio." Can you just explain the why?
That's the fair market value adjustment that we have to do every year according to GASB 31. So, you know, it's just the book value that we need to require for accounting. And that's on the report, so it's just derived from the report, UBS report itself.
Okay.
And, and essentially, remember, bonds are inversely connected, right? So as yields go up, price goes down. And so because we hold the maturity, it's not that big a deal. Not to give everyone a history lesson, but part of, and it's much more complex than this, but the Orange County bankruptcy was essentially that their book value was, or their, excuse me, their current market value was so low because of the timing, they had to sell, which we don't want to do, for liquidity issues and they ended up bankrupt because of it. Now, if he would have waited three months, he would have been upside down and okay and fine. So that's, that's what most analysis said. It was about three or four months and those would have been flipped the other way when he had swaps he had going on. But here nor there, it, it's, if you didn't hold the maturity, I'd be worried about it. But because we do as a matter of practice, I'm not, it's kind of a not as valuable.
I mean, that's Silicon Valley Bank in a nutshell.
Yes.
As a more recent example, although I will say Orange County was my company's client right after their bankruptcy. So I did benefit from that. They pay a lot of fees after you go bankrupt.
And council member, we do like a urine adjustment, like that has not happened yet. So, yeah, we do, oh, urine adjustment, that's the last journal entry we do to book that fair market value. So that has not happened yet, so it's not in the GL yet, just, you know.
Thank you. I think that's everything that I had.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you're talking about the fair market and mark to market there. The, it just strikes me that, I know that we do hold to maturity, so that's fine. But almost all of our positions are underwater. And I think the only ones that aren't are the treasuries. It's odd, just saying, I mean, it's just a function of timing.
And CDs are a bad representation, right? Because in essence, they are going to be underwater till they mature with, right? The full value add and, you know, treasuries will, yeah, depend on the timing of what was bought when. And it's part of why I and Propty's continue to suggest rebalancing the lower yielding stuff doesn't make sense. Not because I can't make money off of it. We absolutely can sell the 2% stuff we have and move it to five. But the time it's going to take to make up the loss on that stuff is just.
Yeah, I mean, you have to do a swap analysis.
Yeah, it's just not, the effort is really not there for the amount of money in the back end of it.
Doesn't UBS do that for us?
They can if we ask them to.
Can we ask them to? Like, it's free, right? They don't charge us to do that.
I have to talk with James on how in depth they go for clients, will they do the whole portfolio? But he recommended it because it makes sense logically. The question is though, remember, you're going to take a huge loss the year you do it. And so we could actually end up with negative interest on our general ledger, which creates a problem for the budget, right? So that's, that's where, you know, looking at it from a large standpoint, it makes sense, but.
Short term loss, long term gain.
And so I did this when I managed a huge portfolio because you could barely even tell the blip of radar because I made so much money, right? It didn't matter, it didn't show up. We could actually take our portfolio pretty down in the interest income generated in the general fund. That's why, it's just the juice isn't probably worth the squeeze, as Councilmember Trupiano and I talked about that. Relative, again, to staff time and all the other work. Because it's not just like, hey, UBS do this, we got to go over with them, talk about this, that and the other. And I just, again, relative to priorities we have and other things right now. I think focusing on, as you mentioned, Mayor Juan, looking at liquidity pools and things and getting that money to just higher yielding stuff is probably more better use of our time right now. Yeah, it's just a better use of our time right now. And especially as Propty's going through end of year close and audit and all the other things. You know, I think it's just from a staff perspective, it's better to focus on that, get it done, benefit from that in a positive way. And then, you know, over time, there may be time to do that, but I just don't think from a staff perspective right now would be that time. It'd be my recommendation.
And we could ask UBS that tomorrow night too, right?
Yeah, because I mean, prior to, let me look at this date here. It was February, none of you were here. So in February, we did, I did ask UBS, please do a swap analysis. They did it, they returned it very quickly. They identified three products that we could, I mean, the spread was small, but they do it for us. So it's like, go do it. And then to the extent that we, I mean, because these lower yielding products that we have on the books are, how do I say this in a friendly way? They're not great for us. That's me trying to. And so to the extent that we can move off of them and have better positions on the books, even if the spread in yield is relatively small. If UBS is willing to do that and they're able to, then I would, I would say they should. So they did that back in February, James did. And I think at the time, I think the direction was, yes, please do it. I don't know if they actually did it because that was also the time of great transition. So it may not have happened. But if we did it, we would only be better off than we are now because things have improved, well, things have moved northward in the interest rate environment that we're in now.
Again, it depends on the loss we would take, right?
No, no, we measured it at the measurement date. It was, we looked at the loss at the time and it was a good, it was a good deal. And so now, it's probably, who knows? Who knows if it's still good?
No, but what I'm trying to say is if we take a $50,000 loss on X positions and in two years of holding this higher yielding position, we'd make 70, I get it. But the first year, we're going to take the $50,000 loss. And that's where I'm saying it could adversely impact our general ledger because we assume we are getting 200 grand, we're only going to show 150 because of the loss we have to take in the GASB hit.
Yeah, but that's just paper, right?
No, but it's spending authority. Like, I have less revenue now, so your fund balance changes. And so in two years from now, it all comes back, but it doesn't in the one year cycle. And so that's where I'm saying, I don't think it's advantageous for us to go down that road today with all the other priorities. I think there's more better use of staff time to focus on maneuvering the deck chairs to value because that's simple and easy and it's not going to be a net anything negative. It's all positive upside to do that relative to taking a hit on our operating budget now when we're trying to figure everything out there as well. I just don't know if that's, that's where my concern, I guess, lies in trying to do it today.
I think, I think I understand what you're saying. I guess for me, I would, if we know that there's, this is hypothetical because we don't know. If we know that there's a better product that we can do a swap for net net, even though in the short term, there's a loss, I don't think that it, the year over year like impact is not so much that I would avoid chasing the yield, especially if we're talking into tens of thousands of dollars. If it's like 100 bucks or 200 bucks, then that's not worth it. And that's why the analysis is important, right? Like, if the analysis comes back and says, that's all, that's all you could get, easy, easy choice. If the analysis says you can get 10,000 bucks or 20,000 bucks, not a lot, you know? But I would say like, you know, for a phone call and a couple of emails, it's worth 20,000 bucks.
But that's 20,000 bucks over the life of the swap? So that could be two or three years and you may take a $30,000 hit this year. And that's where I just continue to be apprehensive about that when staff's trying to balance, you know, budgets anyways, right? In essence, this year's perceived, you know, budgeted deficit gets higher when we do that immediately, in theory, right? Other things could play into it and it all could be a wash anyways, not related to investing. But, but that's where I just, I have apprehension today in looking at doing that relative to, again, using time to maneuver other things and then, you know, dealing with that type of stuff, I think, down the road when everything's a little bit more settled would be my desire at least.
I think it's worth doing the swap analysis, especially since UBS will do it for us.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't see a problem with that.
And then we can evaluate on the facts, right? Because you can't really tell. If there's a big swing, then, you know, it makes sense. If it's small, then it doesn't. And I think it really just depends on what it, what the analysis shows. And, you know, James at UBS was, he turned it around pretty quickly. So, I mean, it's just email with a spreadsheet and it just showed what it would be with the assumptions. So I think that's okay. And we can go from there. So.
I have nothing else. Nothing else for me.
So let's see here, let me, am I allowed to email you during this meeting? I'm probably not allowed to do that. Okay, so right after this meeting, I will email you a sample of the.
The last swap analysis?
No, no, the position summary, so you can see what it looks like. And then on a go forward basis, as takeaways, I have like, if we could get both the activity statements, the statements itself, and then like if they have a list, like a more user friendly way to read activity, because I got to take their monthlies and then put it in a spreadsheet myself. And I think they could probably do that for us. They probably have something. And then I don't know if we settled on anything in terms of durations, but like. And then, I don't know if we settled on anything in terms of durations, but like, I'd like to understand more about what our strategy is on laddering and the durations that we're targeting. Because I, I kind of have a sense that the two and three years seem too long right now, but I want to evaluate that based on the overall strategy and think, does it make sense to do it that way? And maybe it does, but without like, having something to like, look at in terms of like, what we're targeting versus where we're at now and how we're getting there, it, it becomes harder to make that evaluation. So if perhaps the next time we meet, not tomorrow, we can look at both the laddering and duration strategy, I think that'd be useful.
I guess I'm trying to understand the, the end result you're trying to achieve from that would help staff.
Yeah, like, are we trying to have like, X percent mature every year, or every two years, or what's the cycle that we're trying to, trying to achieve?
So again, I can't speak to the previous world. What we are trying, yeah, what we're trying to do is understand that cash flow a little bit better in the coming months. That's, I think, our step one. And then, once we get that, I think, firmed up, then we'll have a better sense of how much money we can put out, and for how long, a little bit more consistently. Until then, I think what you'll continue to see with property and I in the coming months is camp, in these interest rates environments, use much more, and while we figure that out, because in essence, there's not really an opportunity loss right now in being in that. And then, once we have a sense of that, we'd be able to, to, to provide, I think, a little bit greater certainty on what and why, but I don't, I don't know if we're fully going to get there by the next quarterly report. Again, it might be the one after, where that's a little bit more realistic for us to have a clearer vision of, of what you're trying to want to talk about.
Okay, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, cash flow needs, liquidity needs goes hand in hand with our laddering strategy. And, you know, we have what, 40-plus-ish, not 40-plus, sorry, 40-ish positions outstanding, and like, is that the right number? Does that make sense? Like, that's the question, it's like, is that the right number?
I think it's too many, if, coming in first off, I, I would say it's, I don't know why we have, well, part of the reason we have that many is that CDs were the instrument that was used for so long, and you only could have.
Which I'm like, you can tell I'm kind of down on CDs.
And that's no prob, because you can only have $250,000 to meet, that, that's why you have so many. And so, it becomes that balance I talked about of, yeah, I don't think in a portfolio this size, I'd like to deal with 40 positions. So the question is, how do we still maximize yield with that liquidity and cut that number down? I, I don't know if they're probably, James probably wouldn't even have it either, there probably isn't a number, but it's just, what's realistic, and 40 just seems like it's a way over use of time, when they're all bunched together and the, new things will have similar yields, right? I get all the old stuff that's sitting there, but like, new things will have similar yields. We can be a little bit more large in our positioning, as long as liquidity.
Yeah, the way I'm thinking about it is, like, me, for me, I think, you know, my gut tells me 40 is too many, but I don't have anything to base that on. So what I'd like to do, other than, you know, my gut, so what I'd like to do is have staff take a position on, here is the target we are trying to get to, it will look like this in the future, forget about what happened before, say like, this is how I want it to structure. I want this percent of the portfolio to mature on these intervals, right? Because that's not in our investment policy, it's too operational. But you should have something in mind, rather than just haphazard. So when you have enough information to get there, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, then we can come back, have something to look at and evaluate, like, okay, so the target is 25% every year on a rolling four-year. Maybe that's the target, I don't know. And that way, it gives us something to evaluate on, other than saying, wow, 40 sounds like a lot. So, so if not next meeting, then perhaps the following, I think, would be good? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I want to, like, I want to try, I'm trying to approach it systematically, and it's hard to do without a system. So, okay. So then, in terms of CDs, I would just, I don't know, I like, I, I like, I like treasuries, they feel a lot more, they feel a little better to me, so, just in general. And we still need to take public comment. So, are we good for questions for now? Okay. Public comment. So I will, so the, for the viewing audience at home, so I didn't surprise you, we're doing public comment, if you want to make a comment, now's the time, you can raise your hand online, and, or you could come down to the meeting. Mr. Gavidia.
Mayor Juan. So always my disclaimer, yes, you all know what I do for a living, but I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a registered investment advisor. Just want to comment on the treasury CD thing. Yeah, I would agree with the mayor, been in the, I was in the business with the major, with two major wirehouses for 24 years. Liquidity is an issue with those things, small pieces, and it's the firm that is going to bid, whereas treasuries, that's a very, very, very big market and highly regulated. And also too, to get to the positions where you don't have 40, you know, it'd be, it'd make your life easier. But I think more importantly for you, Brett, and this is not a knock on UBS, but I'm trying to figure out why the city is with a major warehouse firm that probably wouldn't give you the time of day, under normal circumstances. If you're a $10 million retail client, sure, they're going to talk to you, but for this sort of thing, essentially what we're running is, it's a glorified money market, when you really think about it. Again, the treasury market makes the most sense, because every week, there's four-week, eight-week, 13-week, 26-week auctions. No knock on the UBS rep, he has no incentive to point you in that direction. There's no, there's no, the CDs do pay, you know, when I used to do those things, there'd be quarter point, half point, whatever's in there, and, you know, we all have to make a living one way or the other. Whereas, would you be better off at a discount house, and you guys are calling the shots and just doing very simple product, like T-bills to your notes? And even the government bonds, I know that in the discount firms, they send out, they send out product almost every day. You can be on an email list, and they'll tell you, this is what we have, this is new, this is an inventory, and then you guys are essentially doing this. So that's the only thing I see here. It, it's too bad that, you know, you can't get, you know, the industry is becoming where unless you have a lot of money, no one will talk to you. That's going on in retail too. I mean, I won't talk to someone unless they've got X number of dollars. You know, $16 million is a fair amount of money. If we were making a lot more in interest, I mean, on 10 million, it's $550,000. That covers a couple of policemen's salaries. And lastly, on the whole, I'm, I'm seeing a bias too with everyone right now, that there's a belief that we're going to go back to zero interest rates, or even heard that, oh, the normal of 2% and 3%. I've got a document with me right now from Forbes that traces everything back to the 90s. And no, that was not normal. I, I hear, what I'm hearing now is very similar to what was going on in the late 70s and early 80s, when everyone thought rates were going to remain double digits forever, and then they collapsed. We just came out of zero. Modern monetary theory has been disproven. Even the Japanese are deciding to walk away from it now. So I think that the one person that the city should be listening to is Jerome Powell. And he says we're going to be here for a little while. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
And.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on Zoom for this item.
All right, then we will close public comment, and I think, do we have any other items remaining to discuss?
No, and are we, I know this is kind of an off-meeting, it's a special meeting, will we at some point, maybe in September, go back to our last Monday of the month at 4:00 PM?
Yeah, I think what I need to sit down with the subcommittee and talk about is, just, some of those months, there's not going to be anything, and so, pre-cancel those meetings and don't even have them on the books is probably a, a better idea, is we kind of get a sense of the cadence of when, I mean, these reports come to you at a somewhat of a certain cadence, the budget process starts, so it doesn't really get to you, probably till March is probably the first time you take a look at it, or late February. So, yes, but we probably got to sit down and actually do that relative to the actual items, so you don't have 12 booked and knowing we're only going to go to seven of them. I would rather, Charlie, just schedule you for seven, so you're not booked up when you don't need to be.
Anything else?
Sorry, I'm just writing something down. No, I think, trying to see if I have anything left in my notes here.
So I get, I guess the last thing is, you talked, Mayor Juan, you talked about developing a target to get to, so we can do a better evaluation, so if that wasn't September, would that be October?
I think he's, I think you mentioned last quarter.
No, it's going to be quarterly, as we look at everything, so it's probably going to be your January conversation on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. All right, I think that's, that's everything I have.
That's it, that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you. Do you guys have any questions for us? Okay, clear.